Steve just took it away from it.
What's that?
Platinum capital, man. You've got good credit, man.
How are you, buddy?
How you doing? Hey, Dave?
Yeah.
It's good for $150,000.
She didn't call me back. I talked to her a couple of times.
I don't think I need a city credit card.
She found out.
That's the easiest way around it.
Only thing is, you gotta pay it back, darn it.
Wonderful. How good, how we doin'? Good to see you. Sounds like it's in there.
How's it been going?
It's very good.
Thanks.
Well, what is our situation on it?
Lots of what?
Things like that.
Oh, yeah. I see.
Hey, Dave? How are you, man?
I said it's closer than it was.
We don't think so. There's one down on Main Street today. I bet it's 35 feet long. This one's about 22 or 23. And then they got those.
Hi, David.
Hey.
How are you?
Doing good. How are you doing?
How are you, man?
We're parked in down there.
Oh, yeah. I parked down there. I parked in Ward, too.
These people want a bridge. I pulled in and I thought, oh, Lord. There is a bridge going.
Even if it started the day before?
Thank you for Broadway, which is... Well, on down in front of us, somebody came down and mowed that, too.
Man, I don't even know where it starts.
Keep making that grease. Those wouldn't... They'll hurt.
This is in the passion sales town. And that's how we can show.
Wonder if old Robert will be here tonight. I doubt it. The school's starting back tomorrow. I've not heard anything.
For this next... For the current fiscal year? We can break it down by Ward in the budget, do you know?
The guy's gonna put the teeth in more than the price.
Brand new.
How much of that money?
I didn't see it yet.
If you want to move there, you'll be there.
If you don't mind, just do it tomorrow.
One, two.
How are you doing?
Uh, I'm Ben Stine. I leave it at the end of the phone.
Yeah, we talked it up. It's never entered.
There's three of us that are gonna interview.
I think that's more seeing this little restaurant here. It's a little yourself. Put a bridge in.
Oh, he's serious. I recognize that certain worker over there.
He's serious. No way.
We have 15. Between 10 and 15, they're easy.
Just 50 bucks. Easy. 50 bucks, man, that's it. Follow it. Way to go.
That's good.
Trying to get more deep than you.
I didn't read this. That was a pretty skill, though.
There's really three phases.
On the side of... I just wanna tell you, I'm listening over here. Turn the street. And the cars are from the bridge. We put that in the custom days last night. We get it on the ballot. That's why it's on there. I want them to hear that. That's why it's there.
Would you call the vote, please, for the... Call the roll for the City Council?
Albert Crowe. Jason Blair.
Here.
Scotty.
Here.
Perry Cameron. David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting held August 4th, 2014. Item B, receive and approve the minutes of the special work-study session held June 13th, 2014. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $2,312,886.26.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other... Any comments or anything? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive a presentation from Traffic Engineering Consultants on the 19th Street Corridor Traffic Impact Study Update and accept said study.
Mayor, Steve Hoffner is our lead traffic engineer, owner of Traffic Engineering Consultants. That's been doing work for us for a number of years. And he's firm as the one who has done the two previous studies on the traffic in the 19th Street area. And we engaged them to do another update to that. So Steve is here tonight to kind of present some highlights of that to you and answer any questions that you might have, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation to you. There's a lot of detail, I'm sure you've seen it before. I'm gonna try to hit on the highlights and the... Kind of emphasize some of the areas of the report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I thought we would start first with a little bit of history. Back in 2005, staff asked us to take a look at the potential development for the city of Moore in the area that we're talking about. At that time, there was a significant number of pieces of land that were vacant with a lot of interest in turning that land into commercial development. And this predated the targets, the home depots, the lows, the park theater. So we did an analysis on what we expected to occur in that land. And from that, we did traffic projections and capacity analysis. And I'll speak to the capacity analysis in just a minute. Then in two short years, actual site plans came in that gave a lot more specifics as to how that land might develop. And at that point, the staff asked us to go back and update the report, take new counts, because some of the development had occurred, a small part of it. So we took additional traffic counts at that time. And then we updated the study based on the more detailed information that we had. And the development that... Kind of the big boxes that were built in 2007, 2008, 2009 were the home depot, the lows, the target, the park theater, and a lot of the land associated with that parcel of land. It's been a number of years since then. The ancillary developments has occurred. When you get the large box stores, then the more the strip development occurs, the commercial developments in those areas. Staff felt like it'd be an appropriate time now to relook at the traffic counts and also the traffic projections for the area. All the areas there of the development that actually exists out there today. So we then conducted traffic counts in the spring of this year. And we were able to then compare the nine-year history and how the traffic counts have increased at the various intersections and how they've increased on the roadway, and actually did some analysis on that. We take the traffic counts and look at the pieces of land that are still yet to be developed, make projections, traffic projections from those, add those into the current day counts. And we do capacity analysis. We do capacity analysis for traffic as it exists today and traffic as it's going to be if all the land develops the way that we're expecting. And that is the vacant pieces of land that still lie out there to be developed. Levels of service is an analytical method. That's the capacity analysis that we use. And it's an analytical method. It's not an exact science. It just gives us an opportunity to compare based on real-world experience and going through intersections primarily. And we assign actual letters to the capacity analysis. And it can get a little bit confusing to the layperson. The way that the capacity analysis works is it makes some projections as what the total delay is going to be at an intersection. I'll stick with the intersection as an example. And then it kind of puts that in a ranking area of A, B, C, D, and E and F. A is very little traffic, probably what you experience late at night in most urban intersections. B is a little heavier traffic. Most intersections won't operate at level service B even at the lowest period of time, once you hit the peak hour in the morning. Sometimes you'll see intersections operating at level service B from about 9:00 to 10:00. That's generally where the highest traffic occurs, between the hours of, say, 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. C is a more normal expectancy that you see at an intersection. So a fair amount of traffic that everybody gets through on a green light when the green light gives them the opportunity to proceed. When we move into the level of service D, typically at an intersection, we'll see some backup of traffic. Everybody may not get through on the first green light, but they'll make it through on the second green light. And the level of service D is generally accepted as the level of service for urban areas, the way majority of our intersections in this metro area operate. Once you move into level of service C, you see a little bit more delay at the intersections that may, in some cases, take two and three signals to get through it. Actually, two typically is all that would take. And F is considered at capacity or over capacity. And depending upon how far over capacity it is, is how long the traffic will take to get through there. It doesn't necessarily mean that cars can't make it through the intersection. It's simply an analytic tool that allows us to determine that it may take two or three signal cycles to get through the intersection. Some of the very heavy intersections, for example, in the city, are in the E to F range currently. In terms of what is yet to be developed, there are really three areas. We divided the areas up so that we can analyze the traffic into what we call the traffic analysis zones. And the three areas that still have fairly good-sized parcels of land are the, what we call TAZ 1, which is north of 19th and west of Telephone Road. Still a significant amount of development that can occur at that location. The TAZ 4 is south of 19th Street and still west of Telephone Road. It's kind of back behind Target area and the land area, back in that area. T... And then the TAZ 8 is a large parcel of land that is south of the Shops of Moore and east of I-35. On the... Back to TAZ 1 for a minute. The projected potential development there is another 100,000 square feet of retail and 243 multifamily units potential. In TAZ 4, which is the Fritz Farm area, it's 50 multifamily units, what we projected, 75,000 square feet of retail and 70,000 square feet of office. And then on the large parcel of land east of I-35, south of the Shops of Moore, 566,000 square feet of retail and 366 units of apartments are currently being built. Here's one other piece of land that's under construction right now. That's the old Walmart site, if you will, where they're going. They're building a Sams. And that Sams is at 137,000 square feet. Because it's not built and operational, we make traffic projections and add them into the analysis so that we can project when the store is actually open. In addition, there's two potential hospitals. The hospital that was hit by the tornado really wasn't functioning, so we added that traffic in. And there's a potential another site for hospitals at the 34th Street, I-35. With all the traffic projections, what it showed us is if all the land develops as we expect it to and to the intensity that it does, the traffic impacts on 19th Street will continue to increase. If you think about it, there's virtually no way for residents on the west side of the interstate to go to the east side of the interstate to retail development. Vice versa, same with office and any restaurants and things like that. The opportunity to cross out I-35 is 19th and 4th Street. There is no crossing at 34th Street. The traffic projections we analyzed with and without a bridge at 34th Street. And a bridge at 34th will substantially improve the traffic operations at 19th. The one point that I would like to make on the 34th Street Bridge is that the large parcel of land south of Shops of Moore will have a significant impact on the timing, when the best time to put that bridge in. But the sooner the better. We... Once the bridge is in, it will take traffic off of 19th Street. I'm gonna hit just briefly on some of the recommendations. There's a number of them in there in terms of widening projects and such. On 19th Street, what is being planned and will be constructed and be in place by the time Sams is open. The intersection of Broadway and 19th Street will have dual lefts, southbound and eastbound. Currently, they're only single lanes. And then the... Their southbound will be an additional three-lane and a right-turn-only lane. So we'll increase essentially two lanes, southbound, to four lanes once that construction is completed. And then a through westbound lane will be added from Broadway all the way to the I-35 northbound on. And you should see substantial help in traffic once that project is completed. In addition, I almost skipped this, this is also important. We were able to get widening over on the west side of the East Interstate Drive and 19th Street. And we're going to be able to add dual left turn lanes, eastbound, to go north on I-35. That also will help that intersection significantly. When we looked at the traffic increases, the kind of the main areas where we saw big traffic increases, there was increases everywhere. But the southbound off-ramps, both at 14th and 19th, have fairly substantial increases in traffic. And Telephone Road south of 19th, I think that reflects the development that continues to occur south of 19th Street in that area. I'm gonna hit briefly on five or six intersections. Santa Fe and 4th Street, with the traffic projections and the way that it exists today, will operate at an acceptable level of service. But in the report, we recommended at some point in the future, it would be beneficial to have northbound dual-left turns, it's single currently, and eastbound right turn lane. The way that we make these recommendations is based on how much traffic is turning at any of those intersections. And typically, when you get in left turn lanes with projected traffic of upwards of 300 vehicles or a right turn of 300 vehicles, an additional lane is needed at those locations. At Telephone and South Fourth, these improvements are needed at some point in the future. Northbound dual lefts, westbound dual lefts, and a northbound right lane. At Broadway and South Fourth, eastbound right turn lane, that's more desirable. It will help with the traffic there and absolutely necessary. Telephone and 17th, as the property to the north of 19th and to the west of Telephone Road develops, that intersection will be... Need to be signalized. Eastbound right turn and left turn lane coming out of there would need to be... The road needs to be widened and then a northbound left turn on Telephone Road to assist with the traffic. Santa Fe and 19th, as traffic continues to grow, dual-left turns, southbound, will be needed and a westbound right turn lane will be needed at that location. The Fritz and 19th Street intersections will be impacted by both developments, the one to the north and to the south. And what we would expect to happen is that as that development occurs, that intersection would be widened out to assist. In fact, we've already been looking at with the area for the developer, the improvements to the north side of that intersection as they plan their project. Tower and 19th Street, as you all know, has a very heavy northbound left turn, especially in the mornings. And widening that intersection to make that into dual-left turn lanes would be sufficient to improve the intersection to where it operates at acceptable levels of service. However, while we... If we get into a construction project there, we would recommend an additional southbound right turn lane because it's a heavy limit as well. And then put left turn lanes in, east and west. Right now, it's just four lanes. It's a left turn. Have no refuge area for their ability there. And then eastern of 19th, that actually is one of the few intersections that already has some operational issues. It does not have any left turn base. At that location, we've recommended left turn lanes in all four directions with the addition of a westbound right turn lane. Like I said, I wanted to keep my comments fairly brief. The... What I would like to add is that the staff and the council is very proactive. I would commend you on doing these types of studies. You've been very proactive in keeping up with the traffic and making the improvements as they were needed. And it's a pleasure working with the community such as Moore on these types of projects. We're always behind the curve. We're here really making strides to stay ahead of the curve. So at this point, I'd answer any questions that you might have.
I would have... Just as I was reading through the report, they referenced the 2005 study and the update of that in 2008. And again, this is most current, 2014. And they all recommended a bridge be constructed at 34th over I-35 to ease the traffic on 19th. And just to make sure that I was clear on what I read, if we were to not... If a bridge were not to be constructed there, then some of the recommendations that I read were the possibility of expanding the current bridge at 19th by adding two additional lanes. However, that still may not alleviate the problem, even if we were to make the two more lanes there.
That is correct. And there are a couple of other possibilities in terms of the interchange itself. That would be the two ramps and the bridge, how that... Those two intersections operate with each other. And Morgan Road and I-40 and then Main Street and I-35, they've built what they call a single-point urban interchange. And it's an interchange where the ramps move and the left turns actually turn inside of each other. Have you driven through, by chance, the one on Main Street, that norm?
Yes.
Okay. That substantially increases capacity and would be a possible solution to the traffic there, 19th and I-35. However, what happens is there's so much traffic on 19th, you go very far, the Riverwalk into Telephone and over to Broadway. That traffic's still ongoing to be there. And while we might substantially improve the interchange, we're probably not going to completely solve all the issues because the other intersections are or will soon be built, pretty much.
I was thinking that I had read something that cost, really, at 34th Street, of that being a full, what do I say, access interchange there? In other words, is that... Do you see that as a possibility?
I think it would be a great improvement. It would be very helpful to the city to have a municipal interchange. The challenge that we've got is that the Federal Highway Administration has tried to maintain interchanges every two miles in the last 10 to 15 years, maybe 20 years. And so they've been very resistant to put one mile south of an existing interchange, running in that at any number of locations. I don't think it's an impossibility, but that will be the challenge.
One of the things that Secretary Ridley had told us that we have a possibility of getting that off-ramps there because of the hospital locations, the two hospital locations would use that as an emergency exit.
Okay.
So that's a possibility.
They will make exceptions.
But very rarely. Anyway, appreciate your kind words. Appreciate your report.
Well, if we... Let's say we were not to put the ramps, we're not to do this, the whole interchange is a bridge. That would also be... That would help alleviate some of the traffic on 19th.
Yes. It would... There'll be a substantial improvement without the ramps. The ramps would be just that much better at that location. And, you know... I had to be careful about saying something like this, but sometimes you gotta build the bridge first.
And as I read some report, the... The conclusion that I came to was that a bridge needs to be at 34th over I-35 to make any significant impact on traffic issues. I don't mind. Does that mean?
That's correct. Fair statement, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If we can just have a motion to accept it.
I was gonna say, do we need to accept it?
If you will, I think just accept it as a formal... Formal acceptance of the vote.
I'll make a motion that we accept the engineering report on the 19th Street.
All right. Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Not much. You call for the vote, please.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of an expenditure in the amount of $125,461 for the remodel and expansion of the Community Development Department in City Hall.
Mayor and Council, this is a pretty significant number, but the remodel that staff is proposing is, for the most part, taking that area back in community development and removing most of the interior walls. And when you get into that, you're gonna be relocating all the important parts of that system, the HVAC, electrical, and not as much plumbing. But basically, that staff has... Has it doubled the list with the past 10 years? Almost doubled the number of employees. And a lot of that's due to the HUD funding that we received after the May 20th tornado. To house that many employees and to have a work environment where they're productive, we have to do something. And basically, what'll happen is the customer service area, as you see the windows where the tellers are there currently, that would be extended down that hallway in the community development where we'll have our inspection clerks and co-deportment clerk, where they're there serving the customers as they come in. And then we'll create workstations within that existing community development area for the employees to work in. And every part of that department will be affected by this remodel except the west wall. And there will be a small amount of construction ongoing there. So it is an extensive remodel, but we feel like it's necessary for the number of people we're trying to place in that department. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Is there a time projection?
Excuse me?
Is there a time projection on how long it'd take once it's proved?
Carol, where do you have it, Carol? About 90 days.
So two years.
No, no.
It's a city project. Another question for you. Is it budgeted? Did we budget it?
No, it's not budgeted.
Okay. Where's the calendar from?
Just come from the fund balance. We didn't know how much we were talking about and how much the costs were gonna be whenever we were preparing the budget. But it's expensive, but we think it's necessary to accommodate the employees. Also, it's gonna be expanding their area from where their current area is to the east a little ways to take up the area where municipal courts used to be, right over here.
I think it'd be a great project. Needs to be done.
Would that include any repairs to the front entry of the foyer with leaks when it rains?
We pretty much have a handle on that now.
Okay.
We had a small leak there from one of the storms this summer, but nothing to the extent that you'd be... You notice we replaced all those fresh holes. And then we did some work on that last front. So it's much better now.
Is this coming out of the carpet fund?
Pardon me?
Is this coming out of the carpet fund?
No, we still are gonna be carpeting City Hall this election.
Okay. All right.
One thing this does not include is there will be some workstations, cubicles, more modular-type furniture that is not a part of it. This is the work... This is the structure itself and the working parts.
All right.
Considering the growth and so forth as well, just I'm just happy that we've got the space down there that we can do this. So I'd like to motion that we approve this.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the votes? There's no other discussion?
David Roberts?
Yes.
And then Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item, item number five is consider authorizing staff to solicit proposals for a master water plan, or water, water master plan.
Mayor, I had emailed you out some more information on this, I think a little earlier, but with water becoming more and more of an issue in the entire metropolitan area, the cost of water, our water contract with the City of Oklahoma City, and, and the growth in our community and making sure that our, the physical infrastructure of our water system itself, distribution system, is up to par. I think it's time that we did a water master plan. We've not done something like this really for a good long time, Robert. I mean, ten, ten years at least, in terms of looking to see what our growth is gonna be and, and looking at our water supply situation with the City of Oklahoma City, or any possible alternatives at this point. So I think it's just important that we begin to look at this with, with regard to the future, because our community obviously can't continue to grow without water. And the cost of that water is, is increasing each year as we grow and develop. So I think we just, we just need to look at this. And basically, the master plan will look at the distribution system and see if there's inadequacies or inadequacies there, and, but also look at sources of water and how we get water, and make any recommendations that might need to be done there.
I think this is a great idea. I think we oughta take it one step further. We have a twenty-twenty plan that's now outdated. How about we do a combination with it?
We may can do that.
Like a twenty-twenty-five plan or something?
I know Elizabeth is working now currently on an RFP for the master plan, the community master plan, or the comprehensive plan. We may be able to hire a firm to do the water combined.
To work it in together as a, as one?
I think that is possible.
Because it's something that we, I mean, we're not gonna be able, like you said, to grow at all if we don't have water.
And we, we would need a planning type firm for the, the plan and the engineering side of, of that for the water master plan, but there's any number of firms out there that, that do that kind of work. So I think that, that is a good idea.
You know, I'm reminded by the guy who advertises on TV that water is the new gold.
Yes.
And I think that.
I, I believe it.
In the good eschatography, I think we're gonna see that more and more.
Think so. What do you guys think about it?
I feel very vulnerable to community.
As well.
We can do that.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the item.
Okay. Give me one second.
Do we need to add the conclusions there?
I, I think they know.
No, I don't think you need to.
Okay. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a contract with Cox Communications Fiber Optics Internet and connectivity between city-owned buildings.
Mayor and Council, this item is for connectivity between the remote sites and City Hall, and also for increasing bandwidth overall. The several reasons that we have are, we have service issues with AT&amp;T that we've been going through, that they have, last year, they've not been great with their service. We've had, during the rainstorm, it was pretty summer, we had three out of, out of the nine, ten sites that we have currently up, that would go down, that includes fire stations and public works. Phone calls are being mentioned because we don't have service. What this would do would be move us to a fiber optics connection, which is by definition would be better than the copper connection we have, and also which is favorable overall.
What's AT&amp;T's response to all the issues and their, their lack?
We'll wait until.
We've had, we've had several of our city-owned facilities down for days or hours.
Seven days at AT&amp;T, that's not gotten out to basic, basic sites. We had public works down for seven days, we did a call for pickups or whatever, we had fire station down for four days and all the works. I, I've seen office supervisors, we'll wait until it, and, 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 I'll get back, I'll pull it. If we're too small, we'll, we'll.
David, overall now, total with AT&amp;T, we're spending?
We're spending about four thousand dollars per month with AT&amp;T.
And this proposal would take it all to Cox?
This would take, this would take all of the internet connectivity to Cox.
And the telephone service?
The telephone service is still running with AT&amp;T as well. We have not experienced any problems, but it hasn't gone down since we moved, we're moving, there's still some, we have, we're hoping to have the same problems with their.
Have you looked at Cox as far as telephones as a thing?
I have not, no.
I think maybe it, it would be a bit surprised.
Wasn't surprised, one thing at times, is what I was, we were looking at the, the internet and then, and applies out the, the Cox. We had checked to see if I could increase bandwidth to the speeds to the annual shelter and treatment center, and AT&amp;T would not be able to provide us any increase in what we currently have down there, and Cox, they were. So that's one of the reasons why I put the Cox involved.
Have you capitalized the difference in the cost?
Yes.
And that how?
It's about double what we're paying now. It's about double, but we're also doubling our bandwidth to all these remote sites, and we are currently also moving to a fiber connection, which is, both AT&amp;T and Cox have said they are moving away from the copper connections and fiber mortgages, makes it more reliable to do some mortgages.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Thank you, David. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of a revocable permit for off-site parking on city right-of-way at three oh three Southeast Fourth Street, located north of Southeast Fourth Street and east of Turner Avenue. Excuse me, application by Rodney Miles.
Mayor and Council, this item is for a doctor's office that's currently under construction on the corner of Turner Avenue and Fourth Street. They currently do have enough parking for city code onsite to handle what the city code considers to be a medical office. However, they are expressing some concern about just the availability of adequate parking spaces for their clients. They're requesting to place a concrete apron at the edge of their property, which would actually be on city-owned right-of-way, where we have never constructed a street in Old Town. Right now, it's a gravel alleyway, that some other businesses also access for in and out. They would not be blocking that gravel alleyway, the businesses would still have access. That would be parking for their doctor's staff and their professional staff. That would leave the remainder of the parking lot available for their clients. A revocable permit is exactly what it says. City at any time, if we ever want to come in and build a road, or if we have need for that right-of-way for any sort of utility extension, or really any other purpose that is the city, our work purpose, we do have the right to, to have them remove any improvement within that right-of-way. I don't anticipate that happening, but it is, right, it's filed at Cleveland County if that ever does happen.
Otherwise, it just won't sit there and look ugly?
Well, right.
This'll be a nice improvement over there.
I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If no, would you call for the vote?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. And thank you, Dr. Miles, for putting your business in more. Item number eight is consider, excuse me, consider adoption of resolution number eight oh three fourteen, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of said city the question of authorizing the extension of an existing half, one-half of one percent sales tax and providing the use thereof, containing other provisions relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to point out that was, the Berks provision there was in Berkeley, on the agenda, on the agenda. You'll notice on the resolution, it's not on there, so we don't, we don't need to address the Berks provision for this. But to, as you recall, this, sales tax, sunset for terminates March thirty-one, two thousand fifteen, and this was extended in under four years. And with no change of the use, it would still be eighty percent designated for residential street, residential collector's street repair, and twenty percent for public safety machinery and equipment. But we did have to give seventy-five day notice for election, for a November election. Last day we could file would be this Wednesday, twentieth, and so if approved, we'll, we'll start the election board tomorrow. Happy engineering questions?
I think this is the best tax we ever had. People love to have their streets fixed, so. In a place environment, getting nice new equipment too, come save.
Mayor, just to give you a little bit of information, since, since April one of two thousand eleven, when this went into effect, this tax has generated just about twelve and a half million dollars. About, just close to ten million dollars of that has or will be used for residential streets, and about two and a half million for public safety equipment. We've bought a number of police vehicles, fire trucks, and that sort of thing with that money over the last four budget years, or into this next budget year as well. And as you said, the residential street repairs that we're able to do with this money have been terrific, and we would certainly, would like to ask our voters to see if they're willing to extend it for four years, as we've done before, the, every four years, this comes up for renewals.
Hopefully, they will.
And I would, I would just echo one of the things you just said, that a bunch of streets have were to have been repaired, the streets that were built forty, maybe fifty years ago, have gotten the intention that they need to be rebuilt, there's still more to do. The city's been very faithful in taking, taking care of our residential streets, and this has allowed us to, to do that. So I'm a hundred percent behind you.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, thanks.
Second.
Thanks. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of ordinance number seven eight oh fourteen, amending the City of Moore, Oklahoma, sales tax ordinance, ordinance number sixty, as amended by ordinance number three three one eighty-three, as amended by ordinance number four seven oh eighty-eight, as amended by ordinance number five five one oh six, as amended by ordinance number six six seven one zero, to provide for renewing and, of leveling a, and assessing of an existing one-half of one percent sales tax upon the grocery seeds or proceeds derived from all sales tax taxable under the sales tax law of Oklahoma, fixing the effective date of the termination, or end of the date of termination, providing for the purpose of said additional sales tax, making provisions several, containing other provisions relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, anytime we have a, have a resolution calling election for a sales tax, we could have the same ordinance that places it into effect, and that's what this does. It would be for a four-year period from April one, not, or two thousand fifteen to March thirty-one, two thousand nineteen, same purpose as before.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna do without the emergency on this one too, right? Because we don't have enough folks to do it anyway.
Right. But still, the ordinance actually won't, it'll go into effect technically in thirty days, but it won't go into effect in terms of?
Until the voters vote.
Until the voters approve, so, which would be in November.
Okay.
Or not approved.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you, both. Do we have a motion in a second? Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is approved and ready, sorry. Yeah. Item number ten is consider adoption of resolution number eight oh four fourteen, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified voters of the said city the question of the issuance of a general obligations bond of said city in the amount not to exceed the sum of fifteen million dollars to provide funds for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping one of the following. One is an overpass bridge at the intersection of I thirty-five and South, and South Thirty-fourth Street in said city, or the alternative, a railroad underpass east of the intersection of South Fourth Street and Broadway Street in said city, with the designation, designated improvements to be owned exclusively by said city in leveling and collecting the, an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon the taxable property in said city of Moore for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds.
Mayor, we placed this item on the agenda for you all to just have a discussion with regard to these two possible projects, and the same situation holds true with regard to the election, for, for the November election, that we have to give the notice by Wednesday to the election board, if you choose to place this on the ballot. So first, what I would like for, and, and, before I do that, these two projects, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about, in the community, as well as among you all and us, for quite some time, with regard to the need for these. The I thirty-five bridge project, we're familiar with, that's what was discussed earlier when Mr. Hoffner made his presentation. The alternate project, or the other possible project, is the railroad underpass at Fourth Street, and the railroad, and, and both of these are at about the same cost, or at the same cost in terms of the proposal. So I think we need to look at both of those projects, have that discussion, decide if you're gonna put one or the other one on the ballot, or you can decide, of course, not to do it. But if, if we're going to do it, we, we have to do it this evening as far as the discussion. So Chris Cochrane is here, and I want him to give you a little bit of an idea in terms of the impacts, millage impacts and tax impacts in our community if this bond issue goes forward, for either project for that matter. And just for your information, some of the property owners on the project, or on the property on the east side of I thirty-five there, north of Thirty-Fourth, that was a discussion about earlier, and, and they may wanna speak, I'm not sure, Jay Jordan and John Special here on the front row as far as property owners. And, and we've been having some discussion with them already with regard to the possibility of this project and the need for right-of-way and detention and some other things in that area down there to cause that property to be able to be developed quicker. So Chris, I'll ask you to speak first, and then Terry, if you'll just briefly go over what the resolutions are and what they do, and then if you all wanna hear from the folks, if they wanna speak, that'd be fine too. And of, of course, a good discussion about this, because it is a, a pretty good-sized bondage.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be here. I'm gonna be very brief with my comments tonight. I think you all have a copy of the spreadsheet that I handed out. The purpose of that spreadsheet is to, as the manager said, give you our best projections regarding the millage rate and then the tax implications. So what we've done is provided two options. In each, in option number one, we've assumed a fifteen million dollar bond issue that is paid back over a ten-year period. Option number two is the exact same fifteen million dollar bond issue would pay back over a fifteen-year period. Again, we're really trying to do is just give you a ballpark range of where taxes and millages might be if this election is called and held and passes. So just to walk you through that, assuming that, first of all, assuming the election passes in November, we would expect to issue the bonds in early two thousand and fifteen. So it would impact, first, the tax bills that we all receive in approximately October of two thousand and fifteen, and it would be on your tax rolls every year thereafter until the bonds are paid off. So with the option number one, we would expect the millage to increase in the first year by a little over six. year by a little over six mils, six point two four, and then you can follow that to the right and see how that would impact various, uh, property values. The average property value in the City of Moore is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, under option number one, the tax implication would be that taxes are increased in year one by about eighty-seven dollars, and then you can see below that are what happens every year thereafter. The way that we have to structure bond issues and levy for bond issues in the state of Oklahoma causes the highest levy to be up front, and then they go down from there. Uh, comparing that to the fifteen-year payback option right below that, you can see that it's, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar homeowner would be paying about an additional sixty-eight dollars. Uh, so your range is, you know, ballpark in between sixty-eight to eighty-seven dollars for the average homeowner, uh, in the City of Moore. Um, I will be happy to answer any other questions that you have. We can go into as much detail as you like, but that's kind of the flip of the script.
Uh, I can look at this, the fifteen-year looks more attractive, because over a fifteen-year period versus a ten-year period, the homeowner on that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home is only gonna pay about four dollars and thirty-eight cents more on average.
Yeah, correct.
So, that seems about right. Best of you there.
I had, uh, to each of your chairs, we had placed a, a set of three documents, already covered the sales tax documents on items eight and nine, uh, and then followed that with the, uh, the resolution calling the election and the election proclamation for the operating by overpass, and then the same thing for the railroad underpass. So, what I will say upfront is both of those documents, between the, the overpass and the underpass, virtually identical, except for the purpose, which is set forth under the, um, on the bottom page two, proposition is virtually identical. We just track the language that we have, the VAT prescribed to be used for these type of projects, but then we, we get into what's called the seventy percent language, we go in designated, what it's gonna be used for is if you're gonna be the overpass bridge or the railroad underpass, and, and so that's, that's the difference between the two resolutions. Both of them were for fifteen million, both of them the same day, number four, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, then, of course, the next agenda, the election proclamation that was published in the paper from three weeks prior to the election, I think we talked about so just a little bit. I'll, I'll give you your previous version, too, if you have any other questions.
Uh, Chris, you may have the answer to this. Uh, do we have bond issues that are hanging off over the next year or so that go up towards some of this?
Yes, sir, we do, but we also have, uh, I believe, two more issues out of a prior authorization that we're going to be issuing anyway. Uh, so, yes, sir, absolutely, your point is correct, I've tried to fill the gaps of previously approved and unissued bonds.
I have a little bit of a problem with both of them. I like both projects, no doubt about it, but here's what I'm thinking. We just built twelve hundred new houses back from a tornado. Almost everybody built those houses back a couple hundred square foot larger than what they had before. Those houses that were purchased in the eighties and, well, sixties to the eighties, those houses cost as little as eighteen thousand dollars. Now those houses are gonna be valued at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand. So, those people are gonna be hit with a huge tax bill.
Well, now, that eighteen thousand should have grown, because, you know, they've got that-
That's true.
Uh, it's not automatic unless you're below the line, but, uh, theoretically, for a lot of people, why their, uh, headlamp taxes will increase five percent each year, so, uh, that, that shouldn't be too far off.
But they, they build bigger houses.
Oh, I know, yeah, but, um... The, the other thing, I, I, I had tried to sort this out over several days, but I think I came to a conclusion a while ago that, um, in reference to the overpass versus the bridge over I thirty-five, the overpass is a convenience for our citizens, but the bridge on I thirty-five is an urgency on the part of our business community and our citizens, get that traffic moving as best we can down in that area, and it seems like the only way that that's really be possible is for that bridge to be built across there, so that, uh, some of the other things can be done that will help loop that traffic. And we still have hopes for the other project later on with, uh, some other funding.
As I, just referring to the study, the traffic study, a lot of our intersections along Nineteenth already has a, like, a failing grade, or a B or an F, um, and if we decide not to put this on ballot, then it's just going to ensure that we continue to have more traffic issues there on Nineteenth, and I, and I would just go back to that study, and on five, it said we should recommend we do that, and on eight, they recommended they do that, and two fourteen, they're recommending that we, we do this. I think we could, I, I, I don't, you know, go through our discussions about mutual, mutual funding, being part from the federal government, part from the state, and there could be an, an option, but I think, I don't know, I could see that taking ten years.
We've been voted ahead of that option several years.
Yeah, we've been working on it for fifteen, so, uh, but we can let, we can put it on once the people vote on it, if they want it, they can pay for it, if they don't, don't vote for it. That's democracy. So, whatever your pleasure on that.
I would make a motion that we place this item on the, uh, ballot, uh, with, uh, the, uh, taking, um, consent option, uh, the, uh, no, the first option, uh, the overpass bridge at, um, I thirty-five, South Thirty-four Street, and, uh, I'd like to promote it.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
All right, thank you.
Before, before you vote on that, let me, Jay, just if you'll come up, just, I just want you all to introduce yourselves. I, I want them to see who you guys are, um, in terms of the development that, uh, on the east side of the highway down there.
Thank you. My name is John Special, president of Special Exploration. We own the property, uh, north of Thirty-Fourth Street, and I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the staff, and traffic engineering consultants for this very fine study. It coincides with the study that we did last year, and, uh, we're here to support the bridge, uh, in every way possible, including any way we can assist, uh, in some financial way, and soliciting other help from some of the other, uh, property owners in the area. We'll take that initiative if, uh, if we get this part. Uh, also, I want Mr. Jordan, my partner, long-term resident of, of Moore is here, and Scott Case is here, and is developing three hundred and sixty-six units that is currently under construction on our property, which will create, uh, up to seven hundred, possibly more residents in the City of Moore, which we think, uh, as we needed after the tragic tornado. We're here afterwards, or any time we can be reached to answer any questions, or certainly be able to support this action.
Well, I've, I've been around here a long time, and, uh, at one point, I'm the property on the west side of thirty-five, and we sold it to a hospital, XCA, right before they went under. And, um, then Ron and I had picked it up, and we came over and picked up the property on the east side of the highway. It's been a long time. We want it to develop into a strong commercial development. We think that the City of Moore, my kids went to school here, we think that it's, it's, it's got some great potential, can bring in a lot of, uh, lot of business, uh, maybe even help support other projects somewhere down the road. But we think that the overpass would probably, as they say, the statement is, if you build it, they will come, and we're willing to help get it built, because we think that once we do, more and more retailers will be coming in the City of Moore, because I think it's a great destination point, so, we're looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Just real quick, Scott Case, president of Case and Associates, and I just wanna echo what, uh, John and his partner had said. We partnered with John on this three hundred and sixty-six unit, uh, high over thirty million dollar project, and, uh, we're excited to be in Moore, and I would like to just commend Elizabeth Jones and, and Sandray, they've been great to work with, and they helped us expedite some building permits, and, and just many guys in, uh, why don't be here in the City of Moore.
Thank you very much, appreciate you putting your partner here.
And I would just add just a couple of comments. Um, when I first ran, uh, considered running for council, we had one of the open forums, uh, forums at Hillsdale College, that was one of the things that I, I said that I would, uh, being added to the forum would be the bridge over Thirty-fourth Street. I've kind of nicknamed it the Miracle on Thirty-fourth Street. And we're not there yet, but we're, uh, a little bit closer, so it'd be my hope that the citizens, when they go to vote, they'll, uh, vote to approve this, and we can make that.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Second, we did.
Uh, who said?
I said.
You did. Scott did.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. Excuse me. Item number eleven is consider authorizing the execution of election proclamation and notice pertaining to the proposed general obligation bond issue.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number twelve is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve amendments of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held August fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, seventeen cents.
Move to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item thirteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the amendments of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held August fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Is that it?
No, there was a B.
I'm missing a page. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, twenty-five cents. Thanks, Scott.
Cool. Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. I'm still looking for my other sheets. I don't have it. Sorry. Okay, we're, okay, at this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting, and Terry's not here, so.
Dave?
Dave? Dave?
Uh, call the vote, please.
Robert Kraus? Jason Blair?
Here.
Scott Singer?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Yep, here.
David Roberts?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Derek Cattler.
Okay, item fifteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held July the twenty-first of two thousand and fourteen. Item B is approve a budget supplement to the beta bonus in the amount of two thousand and eight hundred and one dollars.
Make a motion to approve? Second?
Any discussion? Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
I think we have a director here, David.
When I made this agenda, no, don't, when I made this agenda, I didn't remember that Deidre's gonna be, she's actually tonight at the, uh, at the event for the International Council of Shopping Centers, uh, their event that they have in Oklahoma every, every year, every other year, and that'll be going on tomorrow as well. This is where all of the, uh, major retail brokers, commercial brokers in the metro area, or anybody that does business in the metro area gets together once a year. There's also, um, a number of different retailers that their representatives attend this, so, we try to go to that, uh, every year, she does. This is the smaller version of the event that she goes to occasionally, uh, in Las Vegas, International Council Shopping Centers development out there, so we don't have a director to report.
I'll make a motion to table the director's report till the next meeting.
Second? Would you call the vote?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes. At this time, we will recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and convene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. That the record reflected all the members that were here before, still here. Item number seventeen is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up to speak. Would anyone like to? Okay. Any, item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Our city staff always do a great job, and I just, uh, think all of us received the same email about, uh, our police department, it's a great work that they have done on a couple of cases that they've been working on, and, uh, chief, just, great job, dear man, uh, let us know, I appreciate it. Dear man and woman.
You know, I think if I was the councilman in Ward Two, I'd pick them on a party because the police are broadly.
Another issue? No, I don't. No, it's main taxing.
Anybody else? I have an item to throw out that has come up. You know, we have that, uh, building over there by the library that was used as the police department, and we've had a couple of, of different volunteer service organizations that are interested in using that building. Servmore's one of them, and, uh, I've talked to a couple of members of the Moore Beautiful Committee, and we might figure out a way to team some of these volunteer groups up and let them use that facility. I know Sir Moore's getting booted out of their building, and I totally, and I think it would be a good location for them. Uh, they, they work basically to serve Ward Two, you know, downtown area, that's where they're all from, well, not all of them at this point, but they helped function forty-five thousand volunteers through there after the tornado, and one of the things that, that I had talked about with Sean Evans, who's basically the director of that group, is the possibility of them taking over a couple of, uh, different areas in Moore that have been, not necessarily neglected, we participated in Christmas, Christmas and April way back when, I don't think we've had it in the last couple of years, but they would like to take that and do it year-round for citizens that are in need, and I think it would be a great place for them to do that, and it might even be something they might wanna take out, maybe ten thousand dollars of that donated money, let them use it for people that have, still have roof issues. There's a couple of guys over there, I noticed, on, uh, Telephone Road that still haven't got their roofs fixed. One of them is an elderly man, didn't have insurance, uh, stuff like that that could be done with that money. That really would put it to good use, and it would allow the volunteers to keep coming in. Still has volunteers show up every week, and I'd like to see that if we could.
They have proven that they're a credible organization-
Absolutely.
And, uh, I, I certainly wouldn't have any objection, we're gonna work something out with them.
I, I would agree. I'd like to, to, uh, maybe, uh, see a little bit more of their long-term planning, something to do, what their goals and objectives are-
Sure.
And, uh, to connect some of-
I definitely can ask Sean to come to the next council meeting and- I definitely can ask Sean to come to the next council meeting and, and visit with you all, and kind of give a little bit of an idea of his.
I think that'd be great.
Of his.
Just put it on the agenda, let's do that.
Sure. What would be our liability exposure for allowing somebody, say, in the most minority group to inhabit one of our buildings and something happens?
We'd have to address those issues, I mean, there would be some concern there. We would likely require that they have some insurance, and I don't, I don't know if they do or not now. But those are just issues we'll talk to them about.
Okay. That was just the only thing I had. Anybody else? Any items from the city manager, I won't forget these.
I don't have any additional items, Mary.
What? Okay. Item number 18 is executive session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss potential sale and acquisition of certain real property in the City of Moore and authorize staff to proceed as appropriate and authorized by Oklahoma statutes 25, 307B-3.
Make a motion that we convene to executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we are convened to executive session. I got one more thought for what I'm at, he's hoping it's stuck to the end, I know I had it. That was just driving me crazy.